Good morning, everyone. Ready to get started? So this is our Public Safety Committee meeting. We'll start probably at 11:00. And we do have a forum. Our chairman, Terry Wilber, is not here today, so I'll be conducting. Let's begin with our pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, unity, and justice for all.
This is my first time chairing a meeting. Please don't want to hesitate to correct me wherever I need to be corrected to start this out. Thank you all for being here this morning. And as I look around, I think everyone is pretty familiar. I'm probably with one except for Shannon. This is your first time being able to present up here from our first position?
No, I've been here a couple of years.
Okay, so there you go. That's my first one. So we've done our pledge of allegiance. The employee recognition. So our fire coordinator, Tom Forge, is not here today, but Mike Monat standing in for him. So Mike and I already talked about it. Unless he wants to hold the sign, we'll get that as a field of recognition. You'll tend to see him. Next order of business is our approval of minutes. So the minutes are included here. Does anyone have any additional corrections or appropriate motion? Any discussion? So I have a first. Do I have a second? Approval of minutes?
Just right on.
Legislature fine and legislature can still. Thank you. Now to our resolutions. And just to know here as well, I think it's just the first month we've had the new format. Maybe later on we'll look at that. But we put the resolutions up front just to maybe go maybe a little bit slower. It's our first resolution. This is a resolution authorizing a budget modification for Emergency Management Office. Emergency services hazardous materials, emergency planning, grant FY 2018. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at it? Is money coming in?
I have a question. Is it, the reason is that the grant was awarded in September, but it wasn't executed until now. Is that because we had to wait for DOT to give state the money? Is why we didn't get the money until now?
I want to know where the answer is. Do you know?
I believe that they put out the request for information. So the period of the grant application, I believe, started in September. And then we had to submit a significant amount of paperwork to go along with the things that we were asking to do with that money. And they have to approve those actions. So I believe now they're awarding this particular grant.
Okay. Because I saw the letter that it was congratulating us that we got it. It was awarded back in September.
I'll check for confirmation.
Yeah. And I was just kind of curious as to why it took so long for them to get it.
There's a couple of different ones.
Very often, where these are awarded, says we've been awarded. What it really is is telling you that this is the amount available to you, but there's a second step we have to go through. Typically, we don't want to accept, have the legislature formally accept money until it actually is received.
That's true.
And we're told that we've got this.
Okay.
So it's just a time for...
It's time to think that.
So thank you for that. So are we for appropriate motion?
Right.
Oh, pardon me.
I'm going to move if we accept the vote.
Very good. Thank you. So there's our first. We got a second from legislature. Our next resolution then is those. There you go. All in paper. Any opposed?
More. Sorry.
Now to our next resolution. And the next resolution is for reclassification of position in the District Attorney's Office. This is for reclassification of a clerk. They'll be going, be using the STOP WY program. Information is on the second sheet. Any discussion or questions?
Do we have to make a motion first before we have discussion?
Motion to discuss. Motion to discuss.
Move it. Move. A second, and then I have questions.
Yep.
Okay. I just, are we going to require a clerk at a later time? Or is, we're going to eliminate the court's position?
Yeah. She's... We looked at the work that she's actually doing in the office.
Right.
And more in line with typist. So no, I'm not looking for an extra person. I'm just looking to really classify her for the work she actually does.
Okay. I understand, you know, that she'd been doing, the work that she'd been doing was more in line with the typist and the clerk. So we're going to eliminate the clerk's position so that it's not going to be a requirement to fill it in another position.
Absolutely. This is the same position, just changing parts.
Good enough. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Motion then to go down.
We're ready.
Call in the paper.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
Think you can for their... Those are two resolutions that we use today. Next up, reporting departments. So we'll start out with a mention.
Good morning, everyone. Director Courier couldn't be here today, so I'm going to pull the board for Emergency Management and EMS. Starting with Emergency Management, you all received the report. Just a couple of comments. The first item where EMO provided ICS training for the Health Department, this is a nice example of when we do exercises, we create after-action reports and look to how we can improve our process and then improve our skills. So one of the things that was identified through the Health Department was that they needed to follow the ICS structure a little bit better. We have, we have that requirement according to a law that was put in place by Governor Pataki several years ago. So we were able to provide them with some additional training. And then the EMO attended the Central Regional Meeting of the Emergency Managers Association. There is a lot of updates on the Office of Emergency Management personnel at the state level, so it was really good to get with them and look and see what some of those lines are of succession and who is reporting to who is just a better process for us. So a couple of different things further down in the agenda. The Exelon Oswego City Fire and County Fire Coordinators Office met together just to kind of clarify some roles in the event there is an emergency at the nuclear plant. What Oswego City's role would be in that. As well as number six, the public sessions for the Hazard Mitigation Plan are being scheduled for March. I do have those dates. That's March 27th, 2 to 4, and 6 to 8. So the Hazard Mitigation Plan will be on the website sometime this week, so everyone will have the opportunity to check it out for the Hazard Mitigation Plan. All of the annexes are the different municipalities. So if you have a particular interest in municipality, you can go to the annex for that particular area. And this will be kind of the final work session. Any questions from the citizens, public legislators, anyone who has any questions regarding hazard mitigation? That'll be your time to bring them forward. And then we'll send it to the state, who will review it, and then they'll send it on to FEMA so we can get a final approval.
Oh, where is it? Where will the training be?
That's going to be at EMO in Fulton. As well as the Tier Three Emergency Management Training for local elected and appointed officials. Just a point of note on that one. We did receive the training announcements from FEMA. So I know Director Courier, I believe he completed his report before we got their training announcements. So his training, or his agenda says 2 to 5. Just wanted to draw your attention that the state has scheduled the first one from 1 to 4. So all of the elected officials should have received these training certificates. If any of you want to make copies, these are the announcements from the state that tell you where to sign up for those. It's an extremely beneficial training that allows local officials to know about declaring a state of emergency, what resources are available, how you can access those resources once you become overwhelmed in an emergency. So it's a very, very good training. We encourage everyone to attend. So if you would like copies, I do have copies of the actual state announcement. The water is expected to raise possibly 2.5 feet. Fortunately, we are at lower levels than we were going into this time period in 2017. So, and we already took care of the hazard materials for it. Any other questions?
You're good.
Okay. Moving on to the EMS. So our current EMT class is, fortunately for them, they will tell you hallelujah is in the home stretch. We do have New York State certification coming, their test is coming up at the end of March, so this will be a very busy month for them. And our distance learning paramedic class will be concluding in June. Usually, the last month of that class is not held locally, so we'll see the end of the distance learning portion in early April. As far as Stop the Lead training is concerned, we have had the opportunity to train a little bit in-house. I was able to train two sheriff deputies to be train the trainers, so they will be working with sheriff deputies throughout the month of March. We also had probation schedule, a couple of different trainings. I just completed one and another one upcoming in the next couple of weeks. So our Mass Casualty Incident Plan, final draft is going to be sent out by the EMS this week, and then I'll start preparing the training materials. We're going to prepare us the single training module that will be given to all of the fire and EMS agencies so they have consistent training materials. And then, once we get the training completed, we'll look to have an exercise. This is all leading up to a potential post-show exercise with the airport and the fire coordinators' office this fall. So we need to get these plans rolled out and trained on in preparation for that. So Radiological Emergency Preparedness, most of you probably know that our FEMA evaluated drill is in June. We have a practice exercise May 21st, so there's been a lot of preparation for that as far as planning meetings with FEMA, with the plant individuals and our office. We did offer a cybersecurity awareness training course. Holy Toledo, what an awesome training that was. We are, we are, the users are the biggest risk. Like, just the information that they presented, it was so absolutely beneficial. If you ever get the chance to take it, I recommend that you do. I learned that Apple Pay is way more secure than a lot of other things. Did not know that. So the New York State Emergency Managers Association Conference, they pull in absolutely fabulous speakers. And this year, very timely for us in the middle of a mass casualty and mass fatality rewrite, we got to hear from the Aurora, Colorado theater shooting, two individuals from there, as well as Santa Fe High School. It's beneficial for us to hear lessons learned from others and the experiences that they had, so we can think about how can our process be better. So it's unfortunate they have to have lived through those events, but we're very fortunate they come and share that with us. So lastly, Medical Director 911 and I met together, Ken and I met together. We do need to look at finding a different medical director. We've looked at the RFP for that. Our current medical director lives in Geneva and works in Alex Bay. He has changed working locations. He was at Oswego Health. That doesn't leave him highly accessible for us. He's wonderful, but we just need to have someone who's more available to us. So we are looking to put out an RFP. And it was not on my agenda, but it's come to my attention that there is certain, certain suggestions in the New York State budget that will have significant impacts on reimbursements for EMS agencies regarding Medicare and Medicaid reimbursements. And I've asked the ambulance agencies to provide us some more definite information upon that. First glance, looks like a couple of our smaller agencies, that could mean like a $40,000 reduction in revenue for them. So that easily equates to less people, less coverage hours. So I've asked them to kind of look at that and see what that might mean to us. The only reason why I bring it up is by the time we get together next time, that's probably going to be a done deal. So they have reached out to our Mr. Barkley's office, Senator Ritchie's office. They have visited with them, but I want you to be aware of that as well. The potential changes in funding that he's suggesting are going to have a significant impact on our EMS agencies.
Thanks for that, Renee. So then by next month, can you give us a better, a better evaluation?
Yeah, I'd like to see them get some information together to be able to get to you guys before then. But unfortunately, our EMS Advisory Council meeting was last Monday when all heck was broken loose in county's moon against COVID.
Wonder if it was snow day. I'd let her know it was off. We got any questions in the department?
Thank you, sir. Mike, just a quickie. On your classes that you've been holding for the last weeks and months, did you, let's say graduate, or most of the people stayed in the classes and finished up? Or did you find a lot of drop and off along the way? Any of the ones that you just talked about at your training classes?
So this EMT class was very small going in. There's eight people in this current class, and we do still have eight. That's excellent.
Excellent.
So, you know, that smaller class nature, the instructor really had the opportunity to really know them very well. And these are individuals who were really highly motivated and had some significant education backgrounds. So those are things going for them. A couple of them are at SUNY Oswego, so they have that built-in right now capability of used to studying, used to the learning environment. The distance learning paramedic class, we started with 10 here, and to my knowledge, there's still 10 here.
That's excellent. That's a lot of work on that one. So now, will we pretty much stay within the county, do you think? Or? We don't know yet.
Unfortunately, we did pull this EMT class, and most of them do not intend to stay in Oswego County. They intend to go on to other positions. The makeup of this class is students who want to be nurse practitioners, PAs, so they're looking to go on to some higher education. And I don't think we'll maintain a lot of those. The distance learning paramedic class, a lot of those students have been subsidized by local agencies, so I believe that we'll see them for a time.
For a while.
Because they sign contracts with the agency that they, if they're going to pay for their schooling, they will provide a service in this county for a certain amount of time. So I think we'll see some of those. There is a significant part of that group that comes from AMR up here to do that class, so some of them will be in Syracuse.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other discussion or comments? Renee, thanks very much. Next up then is 911. Governor's a spot read up here tomorrow.
That's okay. I'm good. Thanks, though. Good morning, everybody. Just some high-level, real quick updates match-wise for 911 for January. Biggest change there was really the uptick in wireless calls, which is pretty common in winter time, especially if there's like back events, lots of phone calls coming off ID-1, 481, cars off the road, stuff like that. Our calls answered within 10 seconds was 83.05, still down below where we would like to see it, but we're continuing to cross-train. And we're still lacking a few people from where we should be. So hopefully, we'll be able to start hiring soon here, and we'll be able to start working on that number of activity. As we talked about last meeting, I attended NISAC, CSI, been busy with them. Majority would have been working on those CAD stuff. The rollout of our people obviously started back in September, but I've been pushing big time on mobile data. And it brought almost all of the law agencies up on mobile data, and now they're able to do status updates from their vehicles, they're able to look at call comments, they're able to open up incidents, able to do their own data returns now, which is something that, just to put it in perspective, Dodge County's been doing for seven, 16 years, 17 years, something like that, and Jefferson County's been doing for 11 years. So we're catching up with the times now, being able to provide that service to the law enforcement community, which is pretty big. And so now, starting to turn our focuses towards EMS and be able to start getting them ready to go. So it's been, along with also still continuing on with our processes and procedure changes that need to be updated at 911 with all of this additional stuff that we're doing. I mean, I have law dispatchers that have been doing the job for 21 years that are used to sitting there, and the only thing that changes is when they hit a keystroke. And now, screens are, you know, unit statuses are changing and comments are being added. Calls are just showing up out of nowhere instead of them hearing them come from the call taker. So it's a completely different change for our people up there as well. But making some really good headway with that. Consortium-wise, we had a leadership meeting that I had attended in Dodge County, and we had some technical subcommittee meeting, and then we also had working group meetings that I had attended. Also was able to attend the PeopleSoft training, the purchasing training, which was very beneficial for my department, and I think it was for the other departments that attended as well. So definitely suggest that maybe we do that annually, or, you know, maybe even more often as, you know, as we roll out some of these purchasing changes and stuff going forward. So that's pretty much my update.
Well, any questions? Anything that...
I guess, two things. One, the report that you sent me, I'm not getting anything but a blank sheet of paper.
Okay. It's probably still coming from the old CAD.
Second, because I get questioned on procedures at 911, or who they should call, and stuff like that on occasion. I had an incident last week, I think it was two weeks ago, where I had, I called 911, and it was about a dog that was out in the road on, him and Bill Bridge. And I was worried about, one, causing an accident, dog getting hit, just that other thing. And when I called, the 911 operator told me, well, you have to call the local gate, the dog warden, because they won't, the police won't send, the sheriff won't send anybody out.
Okay.
And it kind of bothered my mind a little bit, but I, then I did say who I was, and then she said, well, yes, she will pass the information on to the sheriff's department. Now, my problem with that is, is if you hit a domesticated animal, you have to report it, and the police come out and clear the dog from the road. So why wouldn't the sheriff or the 911 relay it to the sheriff to say, go out and get the dog out of there? I'm not talking about a dog that was in somebody's yard or out in the field or anything. I'm talking about a dog that was causing a traffic hazard.
We haven't had a chance to sit down and see if the new sheriff or other sheriff had a change for that, but I know it was kind of practice, and we were told previously that unless it was a, you know, we'd have to contact the dog warden for that particular township if there's one, or they had an agreement with that, because the sheriff's office wasn't, didn't have the equipment to be able to handle any type of animal. So, I mean, they would dispatch one if it had been hit. They could obviously remove it from the roadway if it was a hazard, but if it's alive, that at least was the information that we've been going with prior to now. So we can, we can definitely follow up on that and see if there's a change that we need to make to that. But live animal that's not, you know, hasn't been a road hazard as far as, you know, something that they can handle, and it's not going to be a danger to them, that's been our process.
So am I wrong? If you do hit a domesticated animal, you're supposed to call the police, and you're supposed to stay there for a report?
If there's damage to your vehicle, yes.
Okay, so it's a kind of a, kind of is a catch-22 then, but if I'm trying to prevent that from happening, and one, one, I was worried about the dog, okay? I didn't want to see, you know, a poor animal, you know, that was left out in the cold, be hit by somebody coming around that curb coming up to the Hemmingville Bridge, either trying to rush to get across the bridge or whatever. And, but I'm not going to get any help for the dog. As far as I'm concerned, dogs, you know, pets are part of the family of people that, you know, they're there. And the dog is going to cause a hazard for somebody to go off the road and cause an accident to hurt somebody and/or hit the dog, then why wouldn't we in turn say, well, okay, we'll try to dispatch? I'm not saying it's an emergency that you, you have to get something, you know, break somebody away from a domestic, you know, domestic dispute or anything like that, or a car accident, but try to dispatch somebody to the scene to see what they can do to help. Okay? Because I saw it in the morning, and I saw it again in the afternoon. So, you know, I just...
Well, I think they mentioned to you animal control. That is probably the first, they would be the first responder to that, I think, because they would attempt to get the animal, bring it, and do what they need to do with it. I mean, we could potentially, and I don't know why, they said in the past, they would stop it, and if it's in the road, and I think you call 911. If animal control said they couldn't get somebody there, I think sheriff's office probably would say, yeah, we'll send a car over. But again, what are we going to do? We don't have the means of rounding up a dog, you know, no more than any neighbor does underway by probably. Was it laying in the road? I don't know.
No, he was, he was running around in the road, but it goes back, and I know that it's, it's kind of, you know, going to go round and round, but the point is that if somebody's driving along, one, they don't have the means to call the dog warden, okay? But the 911 center didn't say, well, we'll contact the game, you know, the dog warden for that, you know, area and dispatch them to there. They didn't say that.
Is that something that can be done? We don't dispatch.
Right.
We don't dispatch.
It's kind of a catch-22. You're damned if you do it, you're damned if you don't, but...
No, I agree.
I, I just don't see it not happening. I'm sorry. You know, I'm a little disturbed with that. Not going to get any better.
And the kind of practice is to try and get the person to call her directly to the game warden, so that way it's direct communication, not have the third party in the middle where we take information and then, you know, relay it. You know, especially if it's a dog that's running up and down the road or something, so...
If you got a dog out on 481, that's run along 481, now that's going to cause one major, you know, disaster at any point in time.
In that case, we wouldn't dispatch.
We're not going to dispatch anybody, but because it's not 481, it's a side road, we're not going to dispatch somebody.
It sounds like it was probably, you know, a good initiative on your part to try and prevent something, but it wasn't a genuine emergency right there yet. So it sounds like the procedures were followed. Where's legislature?
I believe what it is, I know it in the town, is the dog warden has the equipment to catch the dog. And that's the problem, is that you have to have some equipment to catch these dogs. It's not just getting the dog off the road. They've got to catch it and then take it back to the dog warden, the shelter, because what are you going to do? Just push him out of the road? That's not going to do anything. They literally have to catch the dog and take it to the shelter. I agree that it would be nice if we couldn't have something, if you call one number, 911, we think that's an emergency. I see a potential emergency happening, but I see why a trooper or sheriff wouldn't be the first one to be called. It should be somebody that can take that dog to the shelter. That's just my opinion.
Where's legislature?
Yes. I'm not familiar with this situation as far as not yours instantly with the dog. Here's the problem we have in this county. Most of our dog control, dog control, we don't have animal control in our towns. That's what you have is dog control. City of Fulton might be a little different. City of Oswego is different. I'm not really knowledgeable of that, but I know in my towns and most of the others, it's dog control. That's it. No animal control. So if the cat, or leopard, or python, it's going to go by its bed. But the thing is, all the, majority, and I can't speak for all, like up in Albany, what they do, or down in Sandy Creek, majority of these people are due to dog control, are full-time employees somewhere else. In our town, he has to work at the bus garage and maintenance equipment repair in Liverpool, New York. His name is Butch Hinkie. Butch also does, Hastings, the last I knew, has a dog control. These people, it's part of the animal being assigned to the county we are. They don't, we can't dedicate somebody to do that. We just don't have the money, and neither do the towns. It is a problem, Frank. You're absolutely right. In our town, and I know that Butch does, he has the cages, the nooses, the things of that nature to capture the dog and bring it in, and, you know, you don't take it to the guy again. You can take them, bring them in, you can put them in a pen, and hopefully, you can find somebody that will come and get the dog, hopefully. But I also can't sit there and, at this juncture, when I only have two or three deputies, maybe five state troopers, which half of them are going to be on... maybe five state troopers, which half of them are gonna be on forty-one, I can't have them breaking off what they do to work, to work on a dog. I, I, and I love animals, nobody loves animals more than I do in this room. But it's a catch twenty-two. Remember, there's only a hundred seventeen thousand people right now in this county. If we were in a dog county, we're four hundred sixty-eight thousand people. We can probably generate enough revenue to do different things and they do over there, so.
Let's say, yeah.
The only, the only real, probably the longer we've been talking, the more I thought about it, that, uh, back, um, I'd say four years ago, when I first started on the legislature, going down, uh, what's the road that goes out of Hannibal that heads to Fair Haven? I think that's three. You know, I come over the top of the hill and what do I see? As I see a sheriff deputy herding cattle along the side of the road. Okay, and somebody behind him trying to get the cattle off the road. All right, so they, they responded to the call there, okay, to save the cattle. But they're not gonna respond to save the pet, so I, I, it's not going anywhere, it's not gonna happen, you know? But I just feel sorry for the people that are out there. I saw two dogs get killed when I first started as a bus driver. And the next time when I came by, sure enough, sheriff deputy was there taking down the information and I had stopped, say who I had seen hit the two dogs, okay? But, I, I mean, it just, I don't know, that's it. I, I know it's not going anywhere, so.
Good discussion. I give those comments. Anything else?
I just, as Renee mentioned last Monday, I would, I would say, I'll heck was breaking loose. That's, that's pretty good terminology for, luckily.
It's a snow day.
Luckily, uh, it was during daytime hours, so we were able to take all of our office staff and put them on the floor, but, uh, we had almost every position filled and, uh, we're, we're still very behind. So, uh, it just goes to show that we need to continue with our plan and shared services and, uh, rollover and stuff like that because our neighboring counties, luckily for them, were not busy, but we were very, very busy. So, um, I'll bring more information data-wise for you guys next morning, so just throwing that out.
All right, very good.
Yep.
Their, their, his dispatchers did a fabulous job. You would not know that you were behind, they were all very professional and they were busy. You guys did a fabulous job.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Anything else to add then? Next up then is fire coordinator.
Yes, good morning, I'm Mike Monnet, this is my first time through this, I'm one of the deputy coordinators out of the training center. Uh, coordinator Forbes, deputy coordinator Loomis and deputy coordinator Heath are the hazmat tabletop for the city of Syracuse today through the afternoon, so. Uh, got to report, uh, hit on some highlights like these guys have, uh, and kudos again to Kevin and his crew. Uh, Monday the twenty-fifth, we had over a hundred calls, uh, related to wind. We did have two structure fires. One was a fantastic save and one we, we just lost the battle to the elements. We did have forty-five mile an hour winds and greater, uh, throughout the structure fire I was at. And temperatures twenty, thirty degrees with a minus five degree typical. So it was a very trying day and as I said, Kevin's, Kevin's group did real well throughout the training or the, the wind and, uh, power lines and stuff we had issued with. Now, did have a statement about some office of emergency management, not ours, the state level, along with OFC. A lot of, uh, requesting updates, you know, and there, there was a lot of stuff that he feels that we need to get a handle on cause it's a lot of stuff that we really didn't need to do in our, in our, in that situation for that day. Fire training at the academy or at the center, we're well into our winter classroom training. We have two hundred ninety training sessions scheduled for nineteenth. Um, we are training non-malapoy fire brigades, CPR, compliance based first aid. And stop the bleed, we've been working with Renee, with the stop the bleed, myself and deputy coordinator Loomis. Uh, training schedule, we've been working at the training center, uh, we're upgrading material, our, uh, training materials or facilities upgrades and just getting stuff ready for the spring. Try and open up in April when we get, if we get good weather, no freezing, so. Special op teams, we're moving through that, we're working with city of Oswego and city of Fulton. Uh, some memorandum of understanding to work with the special team units to get some of their resources. Uh, that's ongoing. And our special ops teams, countywide, we're always looking for help. So anybody that's interested in that, contact coordinator Forbes and we can get people on the teams as we need them throughout the, throughout the year. County codes, uh, he's setting up for the spring building projects, fire inspections and fire drills. So it's pretty much what he has. Uh, any questions that I can answer, I can take them back to.
Um, I was just wondering, I see you mentioned the two cities, but what about the villages? Can they offer any services or share?
We do actually with mutual aid agreement. So we're actually, the, the volunteers are on already. It's just tougher for the cities to free up their, their duty crews during the days or during their shift. So we have to do a, uh, personnel manipulation, I guess you would call it, um, to get them. Cause we have some highly trained people in the city of Fulton, the city of Oswego. And I'm sure Don's talked about the, the consolidation, shared services of the trainings and confined space and stuff. So we'd like to use that, those people more efficiently. And it's tough right now with the way their shifts are scheduled. So that's kind of the, the work in progress with the cities. The volunteers, we do it when the pager goes off, we have guys on special teams and we, we respond as available.
Okay, all right, thank you.
What's their plan?
Yes, Mike, uh, a quick question. Uh, I, it's hard to imagine when you see the snow on the ground, snowing like that. We're not that far out from a burn ban because it happens quickly, the grass is dry quickly. I understand all that, I'm in agriculture, I can write you a book about it. My question is this, do you know approximately when, cause I got a lot of brush up on it. Uh, do you know approximately when this burn ban's gonna go effective?
Uh, just, just from my memory, typically the middle of May, right?
I think it's March sixteenth.
March, March sixteenth with the end of May, right, middle of May.
I'll double check.
But yeah, cause they haven't put that information out yet, I don't believe, but I can get that and I, and I'll have Danny make sure it gets to everybody.
Yeah, it is that, it's, uh, March sixteenth to May fourteenth.
Yep.
Anything else? Anything else for, uh, Mike? Probation's up next.
Good morning. Hi, Shannon Perkins, I'm coming for Dr. Day Hall, he's off today. Um, I know he sent an email out letting, um, the committee know that we did have an adolescent come through, um, and a adolescent offender come through, the sixteen-year-old, um, committed a grand arsony. So he kinda went through the system. We had some, uh, procedural issues, but otherwise it went pretty well. It, um, the kid was eventually placed. Um, so it's a work in progress and I think the next one will, will have a lot of this figured out. So, you know, I don't, I don't foresee the same mistakes happening the next time we have a sixteen-year-old felony come through that we did this time. So it's, it'll, I think it'll work itself out. Um, we've had approximately eleven misdemeanor juvenile delinquents come through that are, that are sixteen, so they're technically underage, um, youth as well. Um, and we have not, as of right now, that we've heard had our fiscal plan approved by the state. So we submitted it, we submitted it, so we're still waiting to hear from them, so.
Mark.
Thank you, sir. Um, your first sixteen-year-old, what do you do with them? Do you have to put them on probation? You're not gonna put them into any kind of a lockout condition or what's, what's the general consensus that you're gonna have to do with these people?
It's, I don't know, I know, I know you might have to help your, um, it really is ultimately up to the judge. Were they, I know Greg is, Greg is involved probably before I am.
Mm-hmm.
Um, or before my department is because.
We'll turn and ask him.
He, he gets the first phone call or when the police department picks up a sixteen-year-old, I believe they probably should be calling Greg's office first to see what happened and.
And actually. Did you have to then determine how bad the kid did because, uh, set a fire or something? That's kind of bad, but if he stole something at Walmart, it might not be as serious crime? Is that how it's gonna have to work?
A little bit, you're pretty much right on point, Margaret. Uh, what I can say is this particular case, the allegation was, uh, he had stolen over three thousand dollars from a relative, which would have been grand larceny, third, a D felony. So the police can't write an appearance ticket for that. They have to take the first one to get him arraigned. Of course, if that occurred, it was, I wanna say eleven o'clock at night when they picked him up. Basically, the police agency would have had to figure out what to do with them for the next ten hours, the court's in session. Uh, so we actually, uh, talked to the state police, we undercharged it as a grand larceny for, so they could write him an appearance ticket to say, appear the next day at nine o'clock in front of Judge EB, with the understanding that, look, if you don't appear, we're gonna come pick you back up and you're probably gonna go locked up. Uh, but if you show up and you're on the court, it's probably, take that into consideration. Uh, the young man, to his absolute credit, showed up, uh, appeared. Um, so it's one of the things, it's just kind of looking at case by case, how serious it is. Um, again, Del Giles, a little bit smarter on some of these issues. But with the sixteen-year-olds, if they're non-violent, they're unlikely to get placed at Hillbrook or one of the other places. Um, so we're all trying to figure out a way to get them to the court so they're kind of in a non-corsory setting. Answer that law enforcement isn't babysitting, a locker, better phrase, for ten, twelve hours till court's in session.
So, so what do they have to do? Did they have to get onto a probation with an ankle bracelet, so?
Not generally.
Okay.
The judge can decide, once they get in front of the judge, the judge decides what happens to, to him, whether he gets placed. Or he can, um, since they, um, they can, they can be part of a voluntary, um, program with probation while the charges are pending. So until they make it through the court process and, and then the court decides whether or not they wanna leave it in what's called youth park or send it back down to family court. Or if they wanna, there's a bunch of different options that the judge can do, so.
So are some of our judges out there in the real world, they're going to have to get updated on this. I, do they have to come to a class, do they have to go to somewhere to understand that they can go this far, but then they can't go any further than that?
I, I believe all the magistrates have been trained, they're supposed to be trained at this point, uh, for all the town magistrates to be able to do arraignments, uh, because they, uh, for the juveniles, for the adolescents, they can only go in front of judges who've been specifically trained to deal with adolescent issues. Um, so again, if they went up in front of Judge Grass in Sandy Creek, I believe he's gone through the training. So again, if he could do the arraignment and he could have potentially RLR'd the young man and said, report back in front of Judge EB, next available court date. Or if Judge Grass looked at it and thought it was something he, he remanded, uh, the problem is the police agency, they can't bring one here to the jail, they would have had to find a, uh, placement facility that was open, drive them to that place, drop the kid off and then go pick them up, have them back in front of the judge at nine AM the next morning. So oftentimes, rather than transporting essentially twice, the advice at one point was with, keep custody of them. But the sheriff's office, state police don't have a mechanism to basically sit and watch a sixteen-year-old for, what could be ten, fourteen hours.
They can't place them, but they can't put them anywhere near adult centers.
Right.
They have that separate.
So what are they gonna do? Just get, send him to his mother and father and say, you better be there tomorrow morning? I mean, is that basically?
Well.
Cause you can't put them in right there.
At the, at the arraignment part, um, again, if it's non-violent, obviously if there's acts of violence that are occurring, that's gonna jump it up where we can place it. Uh, particularly if it's non-violent, if it's property crimes or a criminal mischief thing, you know, they went out and they spray painted something, it's over two hundred fifty dollars. Again, they're gonna get them there, but with the idea if they don't show up, uh, Judge EB can issue a warrant, they can go pick them up and then the judge might place them. Uh, but really the intention of the legislation was to keep kids out of custodial, uh, placement.
Yep.
So, again, it is, as Shannon said, very case by case, very fact-specific. Uh, with law enforcement working with us in the county attorney's office, make sure we're kind of tailoring for each specific case.
Kind of flying above the city of your pants at this moment, right? Kind of almost.
There's a process in place, it's just.
It sounds like this was a good tasking, so you had the process was, is in place, not was, it is in place. You've identified potential deficiencies, you need to have a crack on going forward.
Yeah, and the largest part of that was, uh, that the court clerk's office needs to adopt the paperwork so they can get entered in their system to get adopted, uh, rather than just showing up to be arraigned with the paperwork, which is how it traditionally happens.
So you've identified those and you've got a process to make work.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's more of a communication into it, I think, at that, just because we had that, we, we planned this months ago and then we haven't had, we haven't had one, so we really had, had no.
This was an ideal one, that it was non-violent, et cetera, non-violent, so.
Let us say your client.
Uh, Greg, you actually answered the question.
Oh, very good.
Okay.
Cool.
Um, anything else? There was a report, anything else to report on? Anything else then? Anything else for, um, Shannon, probation? So right now then, wow, we're at this point where our community reviewed the census, we've had the two reservations they both had. We've had some great discussion on stray dogs, hyenas and marine cattle. Any other advisory, George, miscellaneous reports?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'll just add that, um, I was over at the, uh, Public Safety Center, uh, this past Friday. We were invited, I think everyone, probably everyone here got the invitation, we were out to a promotional ceremony after, uh, for the sheriff's departments. So, um, thanks for doing that out there and it got great reviews. There were probably eight.
Eight promotions.
Eight, eight promotions and the families were there, it was a tremendous opportunity. So just a, um, more and more of the good news, good things we're doing here in the county. Anything else to add? We've got no player to buy here.
More.
With the appropriate motion, thank you. Let's say your client, excited by, uh, let's say, five. Thanks very much, everyone.